It is six o'clock, and I would like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, September 7, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. And this evening, I have asked Commissioner Tosterson to lead us in our invocation, and I will lead us in our pledge. Stand with us, please.
Everyone bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, first, I'd like to thank our first responders. I'd like to thank our firemen and our police officers and our EMTs and our wonderful staff that we have that helps run this county, and they do such a wonderful job. Thank you and ask you to bless each and every one of them. Keep your heads of protection around them. Thank you for the wonderful place that you allow us to live and the people that want to come to our area and be part of our life. Bless this commission, bless what we do, and keep your heads of protection around us as well. All in your Son Jesus' precious and holy name, amen.
Amen. Place the flag, women and men.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one tonight is a present, uh, present a proclamation recognizing September as National Recovery Month. I would like to read this proclamation, and then Commissioner Finn Dig will present that and a gift to our police chief. This is a proclamation recognizing the month of September as Recovery Month. Recovery is real, whereas behavior health is an essential part of one's overall health and well-being. And whereas recovery from addiction occurs every day through a variety of recovery support services and treatment programs. And whereas prevention of substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover across Georgia and around the nation. And whereas millions of people across the United States are living happy, joyous, and free in long-term recovery. And whereas 2023 Mobilize Recovery across the Georgia Bus Tour celebrates that recovery is real and recognizes that we are never alone on this journey through recovery. And whereas the Mobilize Recovery across Georgia, Georgia Recovery Bus Tour will deliver 100 overdose aid kits to communities across Georgia to be accessible in local government buildings. And whereas education throughout our communities about recovery and addiction is essential to combating the stigma and discrimination faced by many people in recovery. And whereas to help more people experience and sustain long-term recovery, the Georgia Department of Behavior Health and Developmental Disabilities, the Clinton Foundation, the Georgia Council for Recovery, Mobilize Recovery, Serve U R X, and the Georgia General Assembly Working Group on Addiction and Recovery invite all residents of the state of Georgia to participate in the National Recovery Month. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners that it hereby recognizes the month of September 2023 as National Recovery Month in Glen County and call upon the people of Brunswick to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, ceremonies to support this year's Recovery Month theme, Recovery is Real. In witness thereof, on this day, seventh day of September 2023, I set my seal. Commissioner Finney?
So Chairman, I've read the resolution about mobilizing recovery that's going around the state of Georgia, visiting 56 cities, uh, being financed and orchestrated by a variety of partners or stakeholders. There'll be private Clinton Foundation in each community. They are dropping off Narcan kits as a gift. For those that don't know, Narcan is a lifesaver. It's for people that have overdosed and may not make it back. Fortunately, lost his son a good number of years ago. Narcan wasn't available then, and he might have survived. So this is an important tool and weapon that we have. Recovery is not about a hurricane that we're talking about just one thing. Recovery is about those that suffer terribly from mental health issues and behavior disorders. Our low level offenders in the community are in and out of our jails and in and out of your hands because of the just frustration of trying to live on a day-to-day life where the mind hasn't worked well. But the good thing is, in recovery, it's proven that if you participate in recovery programs, you do the work and the fellowship on that, you can get well and you can live as close to normal life as anyone would hope. So this is a gift from the Clinton Foundation and the Mobile Recovery Unit for you to establish in some location where it would be available. If anything, I'd like to put that in.
And Mr. Finn Dig, on the half of recovery, if we don't, he would accept that proclamation.
I'll do that. Representative Townsend was supposed to be here tonight to do that, but couldn't make it. And we now have that strongly in the government community, so I'm trying to focus on it.
And thank you for what you do.
Item number two tonight is to consider terminating the state of emergency in Glen County due to Hurricane Idalia. We, last week, declared a state of emergency, expecting the hurricane to come straight over. It said, of course, changed course, God is merciful, and missed us for the most part. And we're very grateful for that. But it comes time to terminate this emergency declaration that we made. And gentlemen, I entertain a motion to terminate that state of emergency.
So move.
All right. Have a motion by Commissioner Finn Dig, a second by Commissioner Booker, any discussion?
Just one comment. I want to thank the county staff, county manager, the efforts, even though it was by standards of miniscule hit upon us, it was grievous, power lines out, trees down, people in need of emergency help. And I want to thank all of our county staff and the team, the emergency management team. All did a great job, was good coordination, and I know everybody looks forward to the pickup of debris on September the 11th.
Okay, and Mr. Fallon, do you have any remarks regarding that? Or do either of our fire chief, police chief want to add anything?
No, I think I agree with Commissioner Finn Dig and yourself. I think that this was another test of the community, and we have been there and done that, and we do it well. I think we respond well. But we'll continue to get a messaging out on the debris removal, because I know that was a topic of interest for a lot of people. So more information to come on that, and we should have a schedule out within the coming days.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to any other discussion. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Mr. Chairman, move to approve the consent agenda for general business pension committee. Unless there's anything a commissioner wishes to pull.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the consent agenda for general business. And from the pension committee, any commissioner have any items to pull? All right, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. That carries us through to item number 21, which is a public hearing. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated, and your cooperation is greatly appreciated. Item number 21 is ZM 5505-5951 Frederica Road Rezone. Consider a request to rezone approximately 1.6 acres located at 5951 Frederica Road, St. Simons Island, parcel number 04-01048, from Conservation Preservation, CP, to One Family Residential, R12 zoning district. Maurice L. Bacon, Rosalynn Bacon Shepherd, and Veronica Cummins Pinkley, applicants and owners, and Ms. Leaf.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. So this is ZM 5505, and this is a request to rezone property from Conservation Preservation to R12 zoning district. The R12 zoning district does allow 12,000 square foot lots. This property is just a little over an acre and a half. And depending on the design of the properties, potentially, they could get up to five homes. That's very unlikely to be on this, because it is a pie-shaped property. But just in terms of the max density, if this was rezoned to R12, that would be the max density allowed. Currently, under Conservation Preservation, there are no single-family homes that could be built on the property except for a caretaker's quarters if it is a wildlife refuge. And so these particular property owners have indicated they would like to build just one single-family home on the property. But of course, if it is rezoned, as I mentioned, up to five could be the potential density. So this is the property, the north end of St. Simons Island. This is along Frederica Road. Oglethorpe Elementary School is right across the street. And then this is a zoning map that shows the property. It is where the star is located. This property, as well as the adjacent one, is still zoned Conservation Preservation. And then pretty much everything surrounding it in the yellow is zoned R12 or has been rezoned R12, you know, throughout the years since the 1960s. And then the school across the street is zoned Forest Agricultural. And then to the rear of the property is a plan development district. So as you can see, it's been a changing area over the years. And just some historical context, these are the original zoning maps from the 1960s. On the right-hand side of the screen, the very first zoning maps were these steel plates. And so this does show where this blue arrow is pointing. This is actually the CP zoning, and the property sits really right where this blue arrow is pointing. And just for reference, this yellow cross shape is the intersection of Frederica Lawrence. On the left-hand side of the screen, this is the old MyLars that we used before we digitized zoning maps into GIS. And this pie-shaped parcel where the blue arrow is pointing is the CP. That's the subject parcel as well as the adjacent. And the property next door had been rezoned to R12 in the 1970s, as well as you can see on the other side of the property, this had also been rezoned to R12. And this is a survey of the property. Some of the questions that came up at the Islands Planning Commission were about wetlands on the property. I did pull the National Wetlands Inventory map to see if there were any wetlands shown on the property. The National Wetlands Inventory does not indicate that there are any wetlands here at this time, according to that inventory. There are wetlands a little bit further, further out. I'll show you kind of where we do see some wetlands. Yeah, the wetlands that we see are more in this kind of area where you do have a creek that runs through, but not where this parcel is. So IPC did hold a hearing on August 15th, and it was a 6-1 vote with Commissioner Duncan opposed. But they did recommend to the board to approve it as presented. And these are your possible motions. And the representative from the ownership is here this evening. I know Ms. Pinkney is here, and she attended the IPC meeting as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Leaf. This is a public hearing, but before we open the public hearing, does any commissioner have a question or comment?
I have one question. Are these lots subdivisible?
They could be. Currently, if they are rezoned to R12, then they could do 12,000 square foot lots. Based on just the size of the parcel, there could be a maximum of five. But given the shape of the lot, you know, getting a road in there and getting a layout of the lots, most likely two, maybe three could be potentially on the property.
Two to three in this one particular rezone?
Yeah, two to three is the most likely scenario. Five would be, just by the numbers, the density that could be allowed on the property. But with design restrictions, with the layout, we don't see how they could possibly get five in there. So two to three is most likely.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, commissioners? All right, this is a public hearing for ZM 5505 at 5951 Frederica Road. Anyone that wishes to come forward and speak in opposition to ZM 5505, please come forward and state your name for the record, please. Anyone that would speak in opposition. Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion of the hearing. Anyone wishes to speak in faith? Anyone wishes to speak in favor of ZM 5505, please come forward, state your name for the record. Anyone to speak in favor? And again, if you'd state your name for the record, please, ma'am, and you have up to five minutes.
I'm Veronica Pinkney, requesting that we are to build just a single-family dwelling on that property. So we'd like your consideration for that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else that would speak in favor of ZM 5505, please come forward and state your name? All right, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. I did have, of course, as I do on anything on St. Simons, a lot of calls about this application. You know, what people were concerned about was the caveat that going to R12 allowed it to be subdivided, which happens on a lot of these old properties on the islands. I think that the family is wanting to build the one, but it has to be known publicly that other options are available to expand the use or return of investment on that property. Just saying that because of all the calls that I've had, people asking. So I'm okay with going ahead and approving the motion. And that's, I move to approve ZM 5505 as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Finn Diggs, a second by Commissioner Clark. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Pinkney. Item number 22 under General Business is considering engaging Joe Tanner and Associates to perform consultation and legislative support services for the Glen County Board of Commissioners in the amount of $5,000 per month, and approve engagement letters setting forth the details of such representation. And this is sponsored by Commissioner Tosterson. I'd like to say before we open our discussion, Commissioner, that there's been a lot of conversation about this item tonight, and we're going to go ahead and talk about it tonight. But my personal recommendation is that we would defer it at the end of that conversation to a later meeting. But Commissioner Tosterson?
When I first came on the commission in 2021, one of the biggest concerns that was facing most of this commission was old or unfinished SPOSS projects, going back to 2014, 2016. And they were tied up in government agencies that were out of our reach, which were part of the greater, larger pictures as far as Atlanta goes. And without naming names, they were just government agencies that have to go through the permitting process. And we, these projects, I realized after I came on the commission, was not any fault of Glen County or anything that we were doing. We were preparing our packages that we should and submitting them, but there were tremendous delays from the other agencies getting the information back to us. And that was concerning to me. And I thought, and when we, when we set a price on a project, which was before I came on the commission, but we're doing it now with this new SPOSS project, we set a price on it. But when delays come, which had happened in these old projects, for example, if we set a price at $2 million to build this project, and hopefully you can get it off the ground within 60, 90 days, but it ends up being four or five years before we can move forward, that $2 million turns into $4 million, or escalated amount of money. And I felt that at this particular point, we needed help in this area, and we needed help reaching out to these agencies to be able to move these projects through at a faster pace, because undoubtedly, we were in a situation where we couldn't do that on our local level. And so I felt that there was a need for help from a higher level, an outside source that could come in and help expedite projects for us. And that was the reason for me wanting to reach out to other agencies that could possibly help us move our projects faster. Some of the agencies, which I'm not going to name, have been, it's just a traditional thing that they come up with to, not necessarily slow us down, but it's just a protective services. But when we're dealing with the money part of it, the cost gets astronomical, and almost to the point where we can't do a project, we can't finish a project, or can't even start the project after we had approved it. And I feel that this slowdown, we needed help. And it's something that we are not able to reach out. We have a project manager now, which is wonderful, but he can't start his projects until he gets the final go-ahead from, you know, agencies within our state government. And I felt, I saw the need, and I wanted to reach out to the commissioners about that and let them know that I could see maybe there's a solution to this, and that we need a helping hand. We were always trying to build our relationships from the bottom up, from our local agencies up to the Capitol. But I see that we needed somebody at the top working our way down. So therefore, I thought that it might be, it might be a need for such an agency to step in and help us. And the amount that we were, had looked at, we looked at an agency that was going to be a month-to-month contract, which I was very satisfied with. And if they didn't produce, then we could cancel the contract within 30 days. Examples were, you know, we approved Buc-E's, Bunk-E's, a year-plus ago, and under their timetable, they should have been up and running by now, and they're not. And it's because of some state regulations that have been placed on them that they're not able to move their ball well. When that happens, that's a cost effect, and it's, in my opinion, a black eye on our county. And so I'm trying to move the ball a little quicker, a little faster, so that we can get projects up and running at a quicker pace, so that once they come to us and we're ready to start with them, we're ready to go, and we don't have these large time delays. And I've got numerous examples. I'm not going to, I'm not going to burden the commission or burden the audience with them, but I do feel that we're needing help in an area of that source that could be a time, money saver to Glen County and Glen County taxpayers. And so therefore, I think that we need to have a little bit more public input on this. So, and I agree with the chairman that we do need to expand on this a little bit more and reach out to the public and talk with y'all and see what y'all's opinions are on how to go about accomplishing this. But I come from the business world, and I, you know, and delays cost money and time. Profits are shorter, and I feel that there's a need for us to move to another level. We are a small county. We are a county of less than 100,000, but we have big county problems. We have, we have problems that most counties don't have, but we have a port, which our neighboring counties don't have, which are also small counties. We have an airport, which is very, very important. We have interstate. We have tourism and a tremendous amount of beaches that, you know, we need to take care of. And we, when we have a problem, we need to expedite these solutions in a more timely manner. And I felt like we need, we need a help that we're not able to accomplish on our level. So therefore, I've reached out and thought that it might be pertinent for us to be able to look at other avenues to go down. And I, maybe I moved quicker than I should have, but I do agree that we do need to defer this until we can, we can work out some kinks in it. But it's well noted, for a county our size, we get looked over a lot, and I'm kind of, I'm kind of tired of that. I'm ready for us to move our projects. And I'm tired of delays, and I'm tired of, you know, the rhetoric we get from more state agencies. So therefore, that's my little say on it, but I want, I want us to be a more progressive county and get our projects up and running. Thank you.
And Commissioner, would you mind if I added a few comments to that?
Thank you.
You know, first of all, I want to state that bringing this forward in no way cast any disparaging thoughts toward our local delegation. They are always just a phone call away. They always answer. They always work for us and do the best that they possibly can to serve their constituents here in Glen County, North Camden and Bacantos. So it's absolutely, has nothing to do with what we think their capabilities are, because they are immense. It also has nothing to do with the chamber or the EDA. They are both very vital partners to what we do here in Glen County, and we're very thankful to them for their contributions and their cooperation in all that we do. But it does come time, as Commissioner Tosterson says, that we need more help. We need someone that would be an advocate for us at the state level, that would be on-call 12 months a year, that would be in and out of government offices. And this individual, Jerry Keen, that we're talking about this evening, is very well-known. He is the type of person that if he knocks on your door at the Capitol or any of these other agencies, he is welcomed inside. He's very effective, and I think he could help us move our ball. You know, Brunswick is further from Atlanta than any other county in the state, with the exception of Camden and Charlton. The old expression, "You can't get there from here." You have to go through Savannah to get to Atlanta. That's sort of how we are here. And sometimes it's out of sight, out of mind when it comes to doing projects. Georgia is the fifth fastest-growing state in the nation, and 80% of all the growth comes to metro Atlanta. Of the majority of the rest of that, it goes to the greater chat area. We need advocates to help us bring jobs and expand our tax base for Glen County. The money that we spend on having that representation is a drop in the bucket to what it can save us. It's a, it is a tool in the tool chest for helping us move forward in our progress in Glen County. At the last SPOSS, the county commission was criticized for not having a SPOSS manager. We answered that. We listened to the public and we answered. They said for big projects, we need a project manager. We listened to that, and we bring in on project managers for our big projects. So we do listen. We do respond to the public. And this is just one more aid in being more efficient with the taxpayers' money in Glen County. And to that point, that is the reason that we're advocating. We don't think that it's going to cost $60,000 a year for this retainer. We think it's going to save us hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in exchange for that. We think that it's going to bring jobs to Glen County that will help us expand our tax base and lower the tax burden on individual taxpayers. That's our goal. This commission is dedicated to efficiency in government, being responsible to the public for their tax dollars. And it's the third year in a row that we've lowered the mileage here. We're dedicated to that. And while we may not all agree on where we are tonight, we do all agree that we are doing our very best to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers in Glen County. Thank you. Any other comments?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I've had the great honor to serve this community as commissioner now for a span off and on through 20 years. And Commissioner Tosterson is right on the mark of where we're at. I think the commission is, have some reservations, but I think that was more and it wasn't packaged and messaging done right. And so, you know, we're guilty of that. We're human beings, but we're on the mark of that. And I'll give you an examples, some more specifically, that I was personally a part of, being a commissioner, and being a part of the family with the Harbor Pilots and the ports. First of all, without lobbyists, I can tell you that we would not have Sidney Lanier Bridge rebuilt, because the goal was to take that bridge out, leave it out, and let shipping go unobstructed by a bridge in and out of port. But lobbyists working in Washington, with the senators, our lobbyists, convinced that it was important to be able to have that connection economically, to connect Jekyll and St. Simons. You can imagine how it'd been if that bridge wasn't there and the traffic. And that connected also with lobbying for the ports. Brunswick was a stepchild of Savannah Ports, and my family are the Harbor Pilots here and have been for a generation, and lobbyists that were hired at various times by the county and by other organizations cooperatively. We're now, you know, number one, number two in the United States with an economic engine in imports and exports of automobiles and farm equipment. That would have never have happened without lobbyists partnering. Just go down to a small project, and you don't think of Brunswick Airport. Well, you know, Delta used to land on St. Simons, and the Navy Base closed up, a lot of jobs were lost, and the economy went through a little beating up over there. But lobbyists, hired lobbyists, working in partnership with all of the local governments, brought Brunswick Airport to life, where today it serves this community to be able to have guests come in and people fly out, and it's an active airport. Just going a little bit further, we talk about rail. I talk, same with Commissioner Tosterson, all the time about rail, you know? We've got a situation out there right now where the port's going to be expanding, the amount of cars, vehicles, trains coming in and out are blocking up roads. You've got issues with Black Island Highway, that area you're growing down there, you're going to need lobbyists that know people in Washington and know people, because all these fundings come from different sources. It's not just one, and everybody has to do their job. Our state delegation, the lobbyists, and then our manager here, Mr. Fallon, comes from an organization and a property called Law Enforcement Center, FLETCI. I can tell you that I had the privilege to be a part of some of those meetings, and FLETCI came here because lobbyists were involved from our community, hired by our community, by different agencies, to bring us that property in, and it's a big economic engine. And I'm glad that we could pick off the manager, Fallon, here to be here. But anyway, we're on the right way. I think the commission, we just need to get ourselves together, package it right, have goals defined, maybe bid it out. But we do need lobbyists for what we're facing, not just SPOSS, but for all the economies around us. Anybody who drives today from Savannah down 95 here through Brunswick sees the EV battery plants, the warehouses going up, dramatic changes philosophically are happening with the ports. They are rearranging shipping and trafficking, so there's a lot going on. And staff, commissioners, they don't have the full time and resources to be where lobbyists can do and get to work. and resources to be where lobbyists can do and get to work. And I don't care what you say, we all know it. If you've got somebody you know and you're dealing with somebody you know, it makes the conversation a lot easier. And Jerry Keen, if he turns out to be the selection, uh, is certainly well-known. But it's, it is time for us in our next phase of our community and the growth and what we're facing to have extra help come on. So I'm supportive. We just need to reset, Mr. Chairman, package it the right way and, and get it and, and go on so that we have the support of the public and, and we know the tools that we need to employ.
All right. Anyone else?
Yes, I have a question. Commissioner Fendig, um, laid out some great success stories there. And, uh, I was wondering, uh, Commissioner, uh, Tosterson mentioned, uh, Buc-Ee's. Is there another specific example of something that hasn't come about that you believe had we had the, um, lobbyists that we, that would be online right now? Is there a specific project other than Buc-Ee's?
Well, there's, there's a, uh, a slew on St. Silens Island right now that's, has created a problem for our tourist industry. Uh, and, uh, you know, we reached out to the state agencies that would be involved in that and, uh, you know, they tell us it's a two and a half year permitting process and, you know, you, we need to sign up for, uh, re-nourishment packages and, uh, that are very, very costly. And we feel that, that, that's not necessary. We feel that we need to fix the problem and we know how to fix the problem. We can fix the problem in hand. Uh, but, uh, it's a delay and it, and it hurts our industry, which is one of our major industries, along with the port, along with the, uh, the airport, along with rail. So we, we need help and, uh, we need help in Atlanta. And we need, we need the right kind of help. And that's, that's what I was trying to achieve, uh, with, with this motion. But, uh, I, I'm, I'm willing to defer this, uh, and let us get more public input on it and, uh, and, and hear what the public has to say about it and make sure that they're on board with, you know, this decision as well. Uh, and, uh, and I'm, I'm willing to wait on that. Uh, I'm, I think that, uh, it's, it's time that, uh, we make this, make this move, but, uh, we need, we need to hear from, we need to hear from the public. And maybe we could put this on a work session and open it up to the public to come in and, uh, and hear what they have to say about it. I just feel like we're a small county, but we've got big, we've got big county problems. Thank you.
May I? You know, I'm going to agree with what the chairman said that I can call Mike Hodges at 11 o'clock at night and he'll answer the phone. And Rick Townsend, Stephen Sains and Buddy Deloche are all the same. And when this was presented at first, I was, I was kind of in favor of it, but, but I don't think we should look at a single source. I think we should put it out and see, see how it comes back. You know, this may be the best group to do it, but I, I really think if the, if the public's going to buy into it, we probably need to look at bidding it.
Thank you.
My response to, uh, Commissioner Rafalski is, uh, our legislators are up in Atlanta three months out of the year. And they're more in app to present bills and, and create laws and, and pass legislation. Uh, where a lobbyist would come in is they're up there the other nine, uh, months out of the year and they're dealing with the agencies that we have to deal with. Uh, they're dealing with, uh, they're dealing with the Department of Natural Resources. They're dealing with the Department of Transportation. They're dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers that our local legislators don't deal with. They're dealing with other senators or other, other House members. So it's a, it's a different game, uh, that, that lobbyists play than legislators play. And, uh, and we need experience and we need somebody up there fighting for us every day, uh, moving the ball. And that's why I feel like that's the help that we need, uh, dealing with the agencies that our legislators don't deal with. And our, and we've spoken to legislators and they are, they are, uh, in agreement that we do need help in that area, uh, because they're not there full-time.
Let me start out by saying that I've been a part of the commission, several different commissions who, um, would agree with what Commissioner Tosterson, uh, is saying. My concern is how we do it and who we do it with. Um, because, um, I have concerns about this team, why they may be effective, and they have been effective on, uh, a number of other things, but some things that, um, I think, um, if the community knows about it, they wouldn't feel that comfortable with it. But they were just doing what they're being paid to do. And so, but for me to choose somebody, um, um, you know, they can't be against certain things that I think would be against our families. Um, that's, this is me personally, uh, no matter how effective they are. Um, but I do agree, um, and I've seen, we've talked about this since I've been on the commission. Uh, we have been, I think, um, somewhat affected with our annual visits to the Capitol, um, and meeting with the governor's office and meeting with our state representatives, um, and just the relationships that we've had with, uh, with, um, with our state representatives. I mean, I, I personally might look at somebody like Don Hogan, um, than, um, than this group. But, um, I think, um, um, for me, I think we need to re-look at this differently than just saying everybody has a lobbyist. Uh, because I think the EDA and, um, our new project managers' office should be a part of us creating and finding somebody. I agree, we need somebody up there. Um, and looking at doing this a little differently just then, doing a lobbyist. But if we decide to do a lobbyist, then we need to get a big gorilla in Atlanta, uh, that, uh, if we're going to play to win, then that's what we should be doing. But again, my concern is, um, who we do this with, um, and how we do it.
Mr. Chairman, um, and I agree wholeheartedly with, um, Commissioner Tosterson. I understand his frustrations of nothing getting done. And, um, we have lobbyists today because of the red tape that is created in Washington, Atlanta, Georgia. And that's what they live and thrive off of each and every day. And, uh, we do need a bigger voice in Atlanta. We have a board of seven here. We have three congressmen, a state senator, uh, our county manager, uh, Bill Fallon, John Gentry. We got a lot of people. We now have a project manager. Um, we as a, we are really power, more powerful than what we really selling ourselves for. I think, like Commissioner Rafalski, I can talk to the congressman at any time. I don't know if I'll call him 11 o'clock at night, but, uh, I'm usually asleep, but, uh, I can get a hold of him pretty much. And, uh, you know, their frustrations are like ours. And, you know, uh, the red tape, it's got to be fault for it, whether it's by a lobbyist or, or by us or by our congressman or whatever. Um, it's, it's kind of like eating an elephant. You got to take one bite at a time. It's a process. And, uh, Commissioner Fendig, who's served multiple times on this board, he understands it fully, the battles. He was able to get the toll off of St. Silens when nobody said it. But it was a process and it was a hard process. But lobbyists, you, you look around our community and you see the impact, like you said, Sidlin, Sidlin and their bridge and, um, other projects. But, you know, our, our biggest challenge is getting through the red tape that's been created in Atlanta. And whether it's one of these agencies or whatever, it's, we need to get through that red tape. We need to be, our downtown down here needs to look like River Street and Bay Street and Savannah, Georgia. And there's nothing that says we can't do that. But, um, getting back to the, um, uh, I want to see, I'm a results type person. I want to see whether we do this at a work session or whatever. I want to see what their results have been in other places, uh, what they have brought to the table. I need to see that. Not as much me, but the people out here in the community need to see that. And that will sell the product that they have there to sell. And, uh, I think that's what we need out here in messaging in the community to the people. We, to us, they got to sell to us, you got to sell to the community. That's who we answer to. But, uh, I think we need to see some, uh, ideas on that. One other thing, and I'll be really quick. You got 159 counties in this, uh, great state we live in. If there are lobbyists for 30 other counties, where does their loyalty land? We're talking $5,000 a month for us. What if Bryan County's paying eight? Who they going to fight for then? That's the kind of questions I'd like to see answered before we move further. But that's, I'll, I'm done with my.
All right. And thank each of you for your comments. Um, it, it is important to, to mention that, um, I don't think any of us like the term lobbyist, but, uh, I don't think any of us can deny that that's how things work. And, uh, we don't necessarily have to like the rules, but we have to play by them. And I think, I think moving forward this is, is one of the, uh, ways to, to accomplish that. And, and it is important to note that there are at least 30 other communities that have lobbyists that are pulling for their communities. And we have to advocate for ours. And, um, uh, Bryan County, Chatham County, City of Savannah, uh, they all have people pulling for them to bring more stuff to them and we're, we're seeing those results. But again, I, I don't mean to belabor. I do appreciate each comment made and I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion that we...
You're muted.
I make a motion that we defer this item.
Have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Fendig to, uh, defer item number 22. And, uh, is there any other discussion before the vote? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for your indulgence. That completes our regular agenda except for our public comment period. Uh, we do have one person to speak tonight, Mr. Joshua Winchester. If you want to come forward, please, sir, and state your name for the record and, uh, you will have five minutes. And thank you for coming and thank you for being present with us tonight.
Oh, thank you for having me. Good evening, uh, board commissioners, Mr. Fallon. Uh, I'm Josh Winchester. I live over there in, uh, Shadow Lake Community off of Harriedriggers. And I'm proposing, I'm coming forward to you, uh, this evening and proposing an effort for, uh, consideration of streetlights along Harriedriggers. Uh, and the section I'm speaking about, the newly expanded section, uh, goes from, uh, Glencoe Parkway, uh, Harriedriggers and Glencoe, down there to, uh, Harriedriggers and, uh, Highway 17. I did some homework today and that section is 4.8 miles long. Uh, in that section, within that section, we've got three churches. We've got 13 developments, one new one being built. Uh, we got two schools. We have an Air Force Reserve Center there at the end, uh, with markings along that trail there, uh, where they utilize for their, uh, physical fitness, uh, testing. We have a recreational complex and we also have 23 power poles per mile, which equates to 110 power poles in that section, approximate. To support this discussion, uh, I've seen folks, uh, all ages, right? Youth all the way to senior citizens using that trail from morning to nighttime. Uh, you know, riding bikes, running, walking, doing whatever their physical activity, uh, that they enjoy. And as we, uh, as we talk about, you know, the increased crime in Glen County, uh, I'd, I'd hope we take a proactive approach than a reactive approach and, and look at this. I also did a little bit of homework and we consider, uh, LED lights that you can mount on the existing power poles. And LED costs .003 cents per day compared to the incandescent, uh, lights, which is .03 cents per day. So I'm coming forward, uh, hopefully consider this and, uh, maybe a project down the road, uh, keeping our community safe, but also allowing all those folks who utilize that, uh, that 4.8 mile stretch from Glencoe down there to 17 and, and kind of keep us safe over there in that, in that community, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming forward tonight. And, uh, I live out that way too, so, uh...
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming forward.
I want to keep you safe as well.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Our second speaker tonight, uh, has decided not to come. I think, uh, had their questions answered, uh, by our Public Works Department today. So that is the only speaker. So that completes our agenda except for executive session. And we do have a need to go into executive session for personnel and... potential litigation. Do I have a motion? I have a motion to go into executive session for, uh, personnel and potential litigation, uh, made by Commissioner, uh, Rafalski, second by Commissioner Fendig. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, we stand recessed. All right, we stand recessed.
Do it again.
Mr. Chairman, motion to come out of Executive Session?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky, a second by Commissioner Booker to come out of the Executive Session. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Commissioners to approve the Executive Session minutes from August 17, 2023 and August 24, 2023, Executive Sessions.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky and a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the minutes of Executive Session. On August 17th and August 24th. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky, a second by Commissioner Booker to adjourn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We stand adjourned.